Good evening. We'll now call to order this work session of the Glen Rock Planning Board. Today is September 2, 2025. Please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a work session, and we're only going to have, we only have one item on the agenda, and that is a request by the mayor and council that the planning board explore alternate methods of regulating mass and scale of residential development within the A1 and A2 zones. The subcommittee of the planning board has-
Ed, sorry, I gotta do roll call.
Oh, please, please do roll call.
Mr. Morley?
Here.
Mayor Mariko, Councilwoman Cole?
Here.
Chief Ackerman?
Here.
Ms. Triforis?
Here.
Mr. Solowski, Mr. Diaz Pizito, Mr. Bolero?
Here.
And Dr. Pucci?
Here.
Okay, so the subcommittee of the planning board has been looking at these bulk regulations, and with our planning consultant Fred Hyer and Susan Gruel with Hyer and Gruel Associates. This is Mr. Hyer.
Good evening.
To my right, and so he will present his recommendations, his preliminary recommendations this evening, and at this point, would you swear in there?
I will.
Raise your right hand for me. Do you swear that the testimony you provide tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
So sworn. Just state your name for the-
My name is Fred Hyer, H-E-Y-E-R.
Fred, would you, do you have a presentation that you'd like to give?
Sure. For those of you that don't know me, we're planning consultants, our office is located in Red Bank, New Jersey. We work for approximately 50 communities throughout the state of New Jersey, and one of the most frequent issues that we're asked to address is incompatible and out-of-scale development in infill communities. And it seems that the more desirable a community is, the more pronounced the problem becomes. You have communities with an established character, relatively small lot sizes, and there's a pressure to modernize. Now, in the 60s and earlier, housing generally averaged 1,100, 1,200 square foot per home, and a lot of the communities were developed in that time period. It was rare to have a house over 2,000 square feet. Now it's rare to have a house under 2,500 square feet. So what happens is there's an economic pressure to tear down and to add on and build up, and to some extent, it's just a natural thing. People want to invest in your home, in their homes. What was considered a comfortable home years ago is not considered a comfortable home anymore, and it's just the reality that we're living in economically. People pay a lot for the ground, they pay a lot for the existing home, and they feel a need to invest further. That being said, there becomes a point of diminishing return where people do things that adversely affect their immediate neighbors and the community as a whole. As these houses get truly massive, they become very incompatible and create all kinds of problems. You hear the term McMansions and these giant monster homes and those kinds of things. In an effort to regulate how big homes can get, a lot of towns have resorted to what's called floor area ratio. Floor area ratio is a, is a planning standard. It's a measure of intensity. It means how much building you're putting on a lot. And so if you take all the floor area of all the buildings and you divide it by the lot area, that gives you a floor area ratio. If you have a thousand-square-foot home on a 10,000-square-foot lot, that's a floor area ratio of .1. So it's a technique that started to be used in, in single-family residential settings probably in the last 15 years or so. Floor area ratio as a planning tool, though, has really historically been used in urban environments where you have skyscrapers and in commercial environments where you have very large, single-story floor plates. The idea being is you have a repetitive footprint that's extruded upward, and the number of stories is, is, is an easy way of looking at the amount of intensity. For example, most skyscrapers, most downtown high-rise zones are regulated by floor area. Sometimes shopping centers and office buildings are regulated by, by floor area ratio. Single-family homes, that tool is, it's sometimes like duck hunting with a bazooka. It'll do the job, but it isn't probably the best tool for it. Single-family homes physically differ in character from those bigger commercial buildings and those tall, high-rise buildings. They, they have, they can have a lot of mass or volume without a lot of floor area and vice versa. For example, in a single-family home, you could have a two-story entry or, or a great room in the back of the house that's 32 feet tall and 20 feet deep. That's a lot of volume, but not necessarily a lot of floor area. And a lot of homeowners, in an effort to make their homes more architecturally interesting, will do those kinds of things where you have volume ceilings, where you have a lot of volume, but not necessarily floor area. In the case of Glen Rock, you've done a pretty good job of trying to regulate the character of development of, of single-family homes. You've done a few things that I think make an awful lot of sense. You have side yard setbacks that are proportionate to the lot width. They're 30% of the total lot width in the A1 zone and 25% of the total lot width in the A2 zone. That means that regardless of the width, if, as the width of the lot increases, the side yard setback requirement increases. That's actually a very good standard because it, it forces the house into the middle of the lot more, away from the neighbors, and it, and it keeps the scale down a bit. The other thing that you've done, I think, a good job with is the total building height. You have a total building height of 32 feet to the ridge of the building. That's a, that's a fairly conservative standard in terms of height while still allowing for a fair amount of architectural interest. Some towns have standards that are 35 feet or more for single-family homes. So I think the height is a reasonable limitation. The side yard setbacks are a reasonable limitation. So you've got now a, a front elevation. You've got a front facade of a building. Well, what controls the mass, the mass? It's the third dimension. It's the, it's the volume of the building. And the depth of the house multiplied by the width of the house multiplied by the height of the house gives you, gives you a volume. And where, where your standards can use some help and where there, I think, is a problem that needs to be adjusted, in both your A1 and A2 zones, you allow for 25% building coverage. That means the footprint of the home can occupy 25% of the lot. If I have a 10,000-square-foot lot and I could put down a 2,500-square-foot building footprint, that's pretty big. You're, and it's for both the A1 and the A2 zones. You do have a couple of things that are also a good cap. The total square footage of a home in the A1 zone, regardless of lot size, is 5,500 square feet. The total square footage of a, of a home in the A2 zone, regardless of lot size, is 4,400 square feet. Those are pretty reasonable standards, too, and I, I like the idea that your ordinance limits the amount of area that you can calculate because you do have a situation in town where you have a lot of lots that are very deep but fairly narrow. It's a, most towns, the lots are 50 by 100 or 75 by 150. You've got a lot of deep lots. So in the case of the A2 zone, a lot of your parameters are taken off a 140-foot depth. In the A1 zone, it's taken off a 175-foot depth. So that's a pretty insightful way of regulating, too. So the building size, the setbacks, and the height are all good. The problem is, is that nagging building coverage. And the floor area ratio does not necessarily, as I said earlier, limit bulk. So what we did was we looked at coming up with a parameter that will allow us to effectively limit the volume of development without necessarily eliminating the creativity or the ability to have a fair amount of floor area within that volume. So we looked at that, those maximum buildings, those, the 4,400-square-foot building in the A2 zone, and said, that building has a 2,200-square-foot footprint if it were a two-story building. So let's look at what the standard would be in that zone. If you reduce the building coverage from 25% to 20%, you can still get a 2,200-square-foot footprint. You can get a 4,400-square-foot, two-story building, but you don't necessarily have the mass or the volume. If you look at the very last page of, of our handout, we looked at the theoretical massing of a home. The upper-left drawing shows in the A1 zone, at 25% coverage, you can create a home theoretically. Now, you, architecturally, you probably wouldn't want to do this house because it'd be a lot of volume and not a lot of space, but it's theoretically possible to do a house that's 70 feet wide and 62 and 1/2 feet deep. That's 111,000 cubic foot house. That is an enormous volume. That is the envelope with which you have to play to place a house in the A1 zone. That's a huge volume. By reducing the building coverage, the first-floor footprint of the building to 16% for the principal building, that volume could be reduced by 32% down to roughly 76,000 cubic feet without limiting the floor area. The floor area, the maximum floor area that was permitted in the ordinance is still achievable in, in the revised setting. Similarly, in the A2 zone, the, if you use the building coverage of 25%, that translates to a home that's 60 feet wide and 47 feet deep. That's roughly 76,000 square foot. If you reduce that from 25% to 20%, excuse me, 20%, you can reduce the volume of the building by 19% and still achieve the footprint of 2,200 square feet and a 4,400-square-foot two-story building. Now, in your current ordinance, you look, you look at your floor area, and the floor area includes 60% of the attic space, 60% of the habitable attic space. It discounts, it discounts below-grade structures like basements and cellars and below-grade parking, that they don't count into the floor area. But the gross residential floor area includes everything like sheds and things like that. So if we're really interested in scaling or making sure the house is of a proper scale without arbitrarily limiting the amount of usable space the house can get, we're not limiting or counting that habitable attic space that's achievable under the, under the ordinance. So there's a fair amount of creativity allowed. It's a slightly smaller envelope than was allowed, but I think that is the parameter that you probably want to regulate. Floor area ratio is a difficult standard to administer if you're a zoning officer because you have to calculate your attic space and you have to say what's in and what's out. Is that a basement? Is that a cellar? And you have to figure out all of the other buildings and add that in. The other disadvantage with using floor area ratio is from, from a legal perspective. From a legal perspective, floor area ratio is a use variance situation. If I make my home one square foot bigger than it's allowed to be with a floor area ratio standard, I have to go to a zoning board and I have a fairly strict burden of proof. If, in the case of using building coverage as the main limiting factor, if there is a good reason for granting that variance, it's only a bulk or dimensional variance, and it's much, the legal burden of proof is, is much less. So it's an easier standard to administer. In, in terms of how you look at the standard, it's very simple. We're proposing you just do a plan view of the home. Whatever the outbound coverage is of that home, that's it. If the first floor is bigger than the second, it doesn't make any difference. If the second is bigger than the first, it doesn't make any difference. So you can easily tell whether a, a home complies or not, so it's, it's a simpler tool. In terms of other things that we looked at, we looked at possibly modifying front yard setbacks. You have a standard in your ordinance that allows a home to be reduced to the prevailing front yard setback in the neighborhood, meaning if the houses on your side of the street are all closer than 50 feet, you're allowed to be closer than the 50 feet, which is actually another good standard because it keeps the neighborhood character. One possible suggestion we were looking at was to create a maximum setback of 50 feet. So in some cases, it doesn't make sense to allow the new house to be set 75, 80 feet off the street where the front of the house is looking into your neighbor's backyard or into their side yard. So, so I don't know how often it happens, but it's something you may want to think about. The other thing that we looked at is just a refinement of your height definition. Again, the height standard of 32 feet is a good one, and it's measured at the corners of the building, so it's average, so that's good, too. But one thing we would suggest is that the height be measured at a pre-construction level. What that means is you can't arbitrarily regrade the property to try to get a tall building. We've seen instances in other communities where you bound up three to four feet of dirt, and now you're measuring it, and now the house is sticking further out of the ground. Now the basement is a full English basement or whatever, a walkout basement in the backyard. So at one end of the house, you've got a house that was supposed to be 32 feet, sticking almost 40 feet out of the ground. So the idea of looking at pre-construction grade is where the height limitation would come from, I think, is probably, probably a good one. So you've got a community that's desirable, you've got a lot of development pressure, you want to control it, you don't necessarily want to kill it because it continues to have people investing in your community, investing in your homes, and it helps your property values, but you don't want to do so in a way where you have a massive, massive volume. And I think what we've come up with here is a fairly simple tool to get you the result you want without the complexities. We looked at, we overlaid the footprints that we were talking about on some of the existing homes, and, and you can see in, in the case of the A1, they are significantly smaller. In the A2, they're a little bit smaller. So that's that. And we looked at, actually, standards for accessory buildings, too. We looked at the total building coverage being allowed to be... What was it, 20 and 24, I believe? So we looked at reducing the total building coverage, but that in the A1 zone, your total coverage, your coverage for accessory buildings can be 4% of the lot. That's two-car garage, a cabana, those kinds of things. So you still have that 25, close to 25% flexibility for the, with the accessory buildings while making sure the principal building doesn't get out of hand. I think the limitation on a two-car garage we were looking at is like 400, 450 feet or so, and then you have a current limitation on size of your cabanas and those kinds of things. There's not necessarily a disincentive for someone to do a detached garage if they wanted to, but there's no advantage to doing it either. So I, I think those are the kinds of things that you're going to want to experiment with and see how the development happens. Again, if, as, if the ordinance is changed and there are, it proves that it's overly burdensome or does not go far enough, you'll know pretty quickly. I think what we've tried to do is come up with a reasonable limitation. That, that standard can be bumped from 16 to 14%, to 17 to 18%. There, that, that's just the, the range. I think, I think we've got it pretty well dialed in, that's 16 for the A1 and 20 for the A2. But if it proves to be problematic, it's something that can be changed. And if, if in an individual case, that you have a project, you have a home you want to build, and it needs relief from that coverage, it's a, it's a simple bulk variance at the zoning board, not a devariance.
Okay, so at this point, you know, the board members will ask questions of Fred, and, but first, I want to ask you, Fred, what's your experience in other towns in Bergen County or, you know, northern New Jersey with respect to floor ratio ordinance? Are we, are towns tending, trending away from using it, or what's your experience?
The towns that hopped in in the 80s to 90s are now backing away from them mainly because it's a cumbersome standard and it isn't having necessarily the desired effect. I think a lot of property owners view it as an unreasonable limitation of their use of their, of their property because what happens inside of the house, you, there's a lot of arguments about, is that a finished stair to the attic? Is that attic finished or not? Does the basement count as a room? And it, you know, people find ways of trying to cheat to get, to get living space when, when they really shouldn't have to. Well, once you've established the, the envelope that you're playing in, that, that's the main, that's the main limitation. The only, the only exception to that is if you have, if you have a community where you're on septic and the septics are limited by bedrooms and square footage, that's a slightly different story. But most established communities with reasonably sized suburban lots are getting away from a floor area ratio.
Okay, thanks. I'm gonna go through the ordinance, sort of line by line, through the existing regulations and-
Can I just ask a question? So any other 50 communities that you've represented?
Let me, could I, could I continue?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Okay. I'm sorry, Liz. Go ahead.
It's okay.
I apologize.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
I was just gonna ask if, if in any of those other 50 communities, have they moved from a floor area ratio to a concentrate, or to a coverage percent, and what have their outcomes been like?
Their, their outcomes have been pretty good. It's a more easily understood criteria. It's something that, it's part of your code anyway. In, in a few of our, in a few of our towns, we found that people were complaining about how big the homes were. And we asked them, this was part of a master plan exercise, we asked them, okay, which houses you're saying are too big, and which houses do you really like? And we asked people to identify the homes and take pictures, and they came back, and it turned out that a lot of the homes that people liked with the wraparound porches and the Victorian fenestration and all the, were actually physically bigger than the ones they didn't like. They were just ugly and they, they had mass without any redeeming interest. So I, I think that's a caution about pushing it too far to make the building smaller when it doesn't need to be.
Okay. I just, in the handout that I just sent out, the first item, there's a typo, the first item should be height, not front yard, okay? So now, as far as the ordinance goes, the first provisions are use. We're not going to talk about that because that's not what we're concerned about tonight, use. But as far as height goes, we're going to maintain the 32-foot height limit in both districts, and, and we're going to add, as, as you mentioned, that the height should be measured from the existing pre-construction grade. Is that what you're recommending?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the side yard, apparently no change to the side yard?
Well, I, I did mention, one thing we did suggest is that if you're in the A2 zone and your lot is more than 100 feet wide, that the side yard setback should be the same as the side yard setbacks in the A1 zone. I, we, we have started a lot size analysis. We're looking at the width of all the lots. I don't know how frequently you have a lot that wide in the A2 zone, but i- if that's the case, then those setbacks should be the same as the wider lot.
Okay. And with regard to front yard, you suggest that we maintain the, the current regulations and, and that we consider adding a 50-foot maximum setback. I think that's a great idea of maintaining a 50-foot maximum setback to, you know, have a consistency with the streetscape so that we don't have a big gap in, on the street with the house being built further back.
Ed, can I just mention, I think there's some areas in town where there's a greater-than-50-yard setback now, like in the older sections of town.
Mm-hmm.
Would new construction there then be pushed forward? Or would it line up with the-
I think that would, if, if it's infill, it would, it would be with the average setback. That's with, with the existing development. It would be, for new construction, though, it would be a maximum of 50. But I think there would have to be an exception for that because if the-
Right.
That would be prevailing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Let's see, rear yard, no change, right?
Right.
Okay. Minimum lot area?
No change.
No change. Minimum floor area, is that going to be deleted, or is that, that's gone?
I believe two of your zones have minimum floor area for the size of a, of a new home. Most towns have gotten rid of those standards. In the case of affordable housing litigation, they have been deemed to be cost generative, and, by the way, I don't think you're going to have any problem with someone building a house in Glen Rock that's too small.
Okay. But as far as the ordinance goes, because we have a provision for that-
It should be gone.
It could be deleted, okay. Maximum structure coverage, it's going to be redefined.
Right.
Okay.
It's gonna be what?
It's gonna be redefined because we're going to be looking at, well, the next provisions that are going to be new. Maximum principal building coverage. So the proposed would be in A1 district, a 16% with a cap of 2,750 regardless of lot area in an A2-
And the footprint?
That's the footprint.
Right. From, from like a, a sky view looking down, so any overhangs would be in that, so.
Okay.
Okay. And then there's the maximum total building coverage, which is the principal building plus, plus accessory. That's a new, that would be a new provision.
Correct.
And we have maximum total accessory building coverage. So what, what would that include? What kind of accessory buildings does that involve?
It would include any accessory building that's permitted, a garage, a shed, a cabana, any, any permitted building.
Okay.
That's not attached to the house.
That's not attached to the house, correct.
Okay.
How about the setback with the property line?
I think you, you have existing setbacks that we're not proposing to change.
Okay.
Just so everyone's aware, to the public, we'll get a chance to ask questions. Oh, no, 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 no use to apologize. I just wanted to apologize.
Okay, thanks. And then another new provision would be the maximum total impervious coverage, which, which, we already have that at 50%, though.
Correct.
Okay. So that's not really new, but we don't define it that way? Is it defined differently?
No, it's, it's just that there would be a cap on it. That, that's the same as applying the building coverage to the 140-foot depth or 175-foot lot depth, so it's basically the same thing.
Okay, okay. Oh, that, yeah, that was a, that's, under the maximum structure coverage, that identified the 175-foot in the, in the, in the A1 district and 140 in the A2 district. That would be gone, those, those measurements from the front yard?
No, no, they, they would be, they would still be in place. The, the coverage and the footprint limitation are based on using that standard.
Oh, okay, so, could you repeat that?
The coverage, the coverage, principal building coverage standard is based upon a percentage of the lot area to a depth of either 175 feet in the A1 or 140 feet in the A2 with a max, with an actual cap of 2,227.50. Those, the 2,200 and the 2,750 come as a result of applying the coverage to the first 140 or 175-foot. So that's what they're based on.
Okay, so that would be, going forward, that would be in the maximum principal building coverage definition?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. I just have a question on that one. When we discussed at the meeting, um, at the Zooms, the work session, or subcommittee meeting, I wasn't aware we were keeping that. Are there any regulations gonna be for the accessory structure? Because currently, accessory structures can be behind it and don't count, which I believe then we'd be eliminating. But are we still using principal only within the first one forty, one seventy-five? Or principal and accessory?
The principal, uh, the principal structure has to be in the first one hundred and seventy-five. The size of any permitted accessory structure would be limited to, uh, if you look at, there's a cap on the size of the, the total accessory buildings. They are based on the first one hundred and seventy-five and one hundred and forty feet of lot area, but they can be placed in the rear yard in accordance with the current setbacks.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. With respect to parking, there's no change?
No change.
Effective gross floor area ratio is, is gone? And maximum floor area is gone as well?
No.
Okay.
Just one question. We refer to an accessory structure. What if someone was putting like a gazebo in their garden or something like that? Would that be considered an accessory structure? No surrounding walls?
That, that's a, that's a good question. In terms of this ordinance and the municipal land use law, it would count, it would be, believe it or not, it's a building, because any combination of materials that has a roof is a building. All the structures that are unroofed are, are just structures, like driveways and things. But once it has a roof, it's a building.
They cur, chief, they currently count.
They do?
Parkulas covered, whether they're louvered or not, count. Gazebo's, sheds, anything like that currently counts as an accessory.
How about a port cochere?
I'm sorry, how about what?
A port cochere? Like a car?
Or a carport?
Yeah.
Yes, that counts. Usually, they're attached to the home in most cases.
Right, but that counts as...
As building coverage, yes.
So, it, it's not a defined term in, in the statute, but it's left to the local municipality to define it. It might be defined in your, your ordinance. I'd, I'd have to take a look, or tell Dan to take a look, as to whether your ordinance actually defines accessory structure. And if you don't define it, you might want to consider defining it.
And it depends on what you call a roof. If, if it's open, if the lattice work is in a roof, that's, that's a local decision to make.
What about a retractable awning?
A retractable awning...
I think you're okay on that, but again, we could take a look at the ordinance, see if it's a defined term.
Might, might as well shred it up from the wind.
Yeah. The idea didn't work for me either, so, I, I hear you.
Okay.
Did everyone finish? I'd like to go last.
Okay, I have a couple of just basic questions. You had mentioned septic. I believe there are still a few houses, not many, that are on septic in Glen Rock. Would they have to have different parameters?
No, they, but, but their ability to expand would be limited based on the ability to obtain a septic permit, and not necessarily your zoning. They may bump into a constraint with that before they can actually build what you allow.
Okay. And for the setback, where is the setback from? Is that from the property line? Is that from the sidewalk? Is that from the right-of-way, or where does that start?
The setbacks are from the property line. So, in some cases, the rights-of-way are bigger. In some places, they start what, what looks like the first seven feet of your driveway, maybe in the street right-of-way. But all the setbacks are taken from the property line.
The actual property line, okay. That's all I have, yeah, thank you.
I just have a couple, really a question. So, did you foresee, on any other towns you've worked with, that you may have, for the larger lots, that this is much more restrictive for them? And you actually may have houses that meet all the setbacks, and meet all the other requirements, but, you know, they're, they're quite limited in their, in their house build?
Yeah, actually, and that's, that's why your current approach actually makes sense to me, because most towns weren't insightful enough to do that. Regardless of the lot area, you're capped at fifty-five hundred square feet. That's still a pretty good size home. If you had a twenty thousand square foot lot, and you wanted to have a twenty-five percent coverage, that would be like a thirty, you know, it would be a fifteen, eighteen thousand square foot home. It doesn't make any sense.
Right. So, really, really, at the end of the day, you're, you're really gonna be limited at your fifty-five hundred anyway.
Correct. You're running, bumping up against that cap before the percentage.
You're gonna bump into, right, exactly, okay.
And, and sorry, one more. Oh, sorry. Is there any, was there any discussion on adding, like, new required water retention systems for impervious coverage?
We, we didn't, we didn't look at that. We're not talking about changing the impervious standards. Our, we were really limited to looking at the building's mass and volume. It's probably a good idea.
Yeah, okay.
I'm just wondering if the subcommittee got any input from some of the local area architects or builders?
No, but we, we invited, you know, we're, we're still, you know, we have a month before we're gonna be making a recommendation, so...
This is basically the first work session.
Right, right.
Okay. Can I go?
Gabe, okay.
Mr. Hyer, thank you very much. You made a nice presentation there. Very complicated. I mean, you say that yours would be simpler, but I think to understand your proposal...
Mic closer.
Oh, sorry. To understand your proposal, to me, not only you have to be a planner, you have to be a lawyer, a, a real estate broker, a math major, you know? It's pretty complicated, right? But I didn't have the advantage, or the privilege, to be part of the committee. And you've met with the committee a number of times, I imagine. And, uh, Mr. Morley was a member of that committee, and that's why he speaks so well about it. But I'm in a little bit of disadvantage, so I have to be meticulous to my questions, so that I understand it, I hopefully, the planning board will understand it. But more important to me is that the public understands it. So, you gave a number, a lot of numbers, a lot of definitions, but I want to keep it simple. I like to keep it simple. I'm a simple person. Uh, Mr. Hyer, do you agree with this statement? Can you hear it?
Put it, put it right next to your mouth.
Put it on your paper, like this.
Put it closer to him?
On the paper.
I'm sorry about that.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Hyer, uh, if, if you don't understand my question or something, just ask me, because I, I don't know, you know, and you don't know what I know. But I'll clarify for everybody, very simple. But you, you, you agree with this statement that the EGVAR, which is the Effective Gross Floor Area Ratio Ordinance, was enacted to prevent overbuilding on residential lots? Its goal is to preserve neighborhood character, manage building scale and mass, protect light and air between properties, and reduce stormwater runoff by limiting excessive home sizes relative to lot size. You agree with that statement?
I agree. That was the purpose of the, of the ordinance. I'm not sure how successful it was.
Okay, well, when was the ordinance enacted, you know?
I don't know offhand.
It was enacted in two oh eight. We've had that ordinance for seventeen years. And what did you learn from the committee, or from other investigators, that you've done? As far as, what brought about this problem the last year or so? Do you know?
Not particularly, no.
Okay. Uh, my, my understanding is what brought it about is that they builder, the same builder, two different builders, I really don't know for sure, presented some plans to the building department, and they were approved, because a permit was issued. And then later on, I do not know how, what for, but he, he happened to get a CO for a home that was in excess of our permitted square footage. You aware of that?
No, but that, that's the exact problem I was talking about before, is that when you, you, you really have to limit the outside mass of the building. And what happens inside is really up to the homeowner. So, you could wind up with a situation, someone finishes an attic, someone finishes a basement. And all of a sudden, you're in violation of the floor area ratio. And, but the impact from the outside of the building hasn't changed. I think that's part of the reason to get rid of that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about, you want to get rid of it, but are you aware that in New Jersey, the floor area ratio with lot size is the prevalent way to do, uh, home construction?
Not in, not in single-family development.
In single-family, it's not, you're saying?
No.
All right. But in, in Glen Rock, and you noticed that when you provide for planning, you gear it toward the individual municipality, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, I'm sure you investigated somehow our municipality through demographics or some other fashion? You, you're aware, we have two zones, obviously. We just discussed it. A1 and A2. A1 is a smaller portion of our town. What percentage of the, uh, town is, uh, single-family homes? Would you know that?
Not offhand.
It's ninety-three percent of our town is single-family homes. So, we have an interest in preserving the character of that, uh, status according to our master plan. I'm sure you reviewed the master plan. We want to retain the character and image of a small-town feeling. Now, you indicate in your proposal that you want to change the way the floor area is calculated from relative to the lot size, meaning that a smaller lot would get a smaller home, and a larger lot would get a larger home. That's what we have now. That's our ordinance now. In your situation, you want to characterize it, or make it, not from the lot size, but from the actual size of the building, the house, correct?
No, the larger the lot size, the larger the home. It's just measured by the building footprint, and then it's, it's just the height on top of that.
Right, I agree. But you're saying, let's say, the example that you gave, and I have it in front of me, okay? The example that you gave, and I have it in front of me, is you proposed, in an A2 zone, a building coverage, correct? Do you have it in front of you? You want to keep it in front of you? I'll, I'll pass it off to the, uh, members of the planning board, my notes on it. I hope you can read my handwriting. Here. Joe, can you pass these around? I don't have enough to give to the audience, but whatever I have left, you can look at it. Get past this line. So... Give this to everyone. The reason why I, I'm passing this around is that we did some calc, I did some calculations, so this, we're gonna have to worry about doing it as I speak. So, the reason why I, I, I'll speak about the A2 zone, because the A1 zone, as you indicated earlier, there's probably about a hundred and fifty homes there. It's like five percent of our whole town. The A2 zone is the bulk of our concerns. Thank you. So, Mr. Hyer, we're looking at the, the proposed A2, you, I didn't prepare this, you prepared this. I don't want to take credit for your nice sketchwork. But you can see, the handwriting is mine, they're on the right and the left. But let's analyze, okay? Let's analyze your proposal compared to the existing ordinance that we have today, that we've had for seventeen years, and see what makes more sense, okay? So, your proposal is that you have a bill, a lot eighty by one forty, correct? You looking at it?
Correct.
All right. And then you're putting a building there, a house sixty feet by thirty-seven feet, correct?
Correct.
Now, your proposal is that we take the area of just the house, right? The footprint?
The footprint.
Okay, I meant, uh, the footprint. And then that will determine the square footage that we could put on that house, correct?
When, when you look at the height added to that, yes.
The height, the height is thirty-two feet, isn't it? That we haven't changed.
That's correct, but the square footage of the house...
All right, so now, if my, see if my calcul, I did this really quick. Honestly, I, I don't want to feel like I made a minute error, but double-check on mine. Sixty times thirty-seven is two thousand two hundred, correct?
Correct.
All right. Now, that's just for the footprint, right?
Yes.
So, most new homes, nobody's gonna build a one-floor new home. They'll build two floors, correct?
Correct.
So, the footprint, the footprint, the square footage of the home would be four thousand four hundred, correct?
Correct, which is the current maximum in the A2.
All right, well, let's, 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 they're getting ahead of me. Four thousand four hundred will be the, the square footage of the home in your proposal on a lot eighty by one forty.
Correct.
Now, let's take it on the left-hand side, which is the present zone, uh, present ordinance that I calculated, which you look at right now. The, our ordinance, there's something really unique about it, that in the A2 calculation, would you know, you know, what, what that uniqueness would be? Like, as far as the square footage of the house? Do you just take the square footage of the lot?
The, the FAR standard in the A2 zone is point three five minus the width of the lot, times the depth of the lot, up to one hundred and forty feet deep, minus nine, ninety-five hundred, times point zero 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 one two five.
But it's still math, it's just math, just like your other, your formula is math. You're just adding, subtracting, or multiplying.
Correct.
Okay. Now, whether you may have to make one more step, it's not a big step. It's one more step, that's all it is. So, let me ask you. We take the lot size, eighty by one forty, it gives eleven thousand two hundred square feet, correct?
Correct.
Now, in the A2 zone, we would multiply it by thirty-five percent, correct?
Um, it, there's an adjustment in, in that, and that's that equation I'm talking about.
Yeah, the first step, multiplying by thirty-five. And then there's that step that you're talking, what's the significance of ninety-five hundred? Do you know?
I don't know where that number came from.
I didn't either. I asked, and nobody would tell me, but I found out on my own.
And it was?
Yeah, all right. Ninety-five hundred represents the average lot in the A2 zone. So, they, but they, this, this, the nuance and the beauty about this particular ordinance is this, that there is some flexibility in the A2 zone in the event you have a small lot, and then another lot next to it that's bigger. The flexibility, the nuance, is that you scale down that other lot that's bigger, so that it doesn't overshadow that other home.
You can't...
Do you follow that, or no?
In, in the proposed standard, the lot, the building coverage is scaled down if the lot is less than eleven thousand two hundred, or eleven thousand...
Nine thousand five hundred.
If it's nine five, nine thousand five hundred, the house is smaller. It's not, you don't get a twenty-two hundred square foot footprint in, in a smaller lot.
Twenty-two hundred? Well, let's, let's talk about the one we're talking about right now. The eighty-foot by one hundred and forty-foot. I'm comparing our ordinance now to your proposed ordinance. Which one is larger? Which one do you say is larger, uh, result, as far as square footage of the home?
Uh, it depends on how you, how you look at it.
It's just math, not how you look at it.
Well, there's a difference in the, in the way they're measured.
No, I, I went over how we measure. We're gonna measure it the way you suggested, which is multiply the house, sixty by ti- 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 thirty-seven, right? And then double it, because you have two floors. That's forty-four hundred.
Correct.
So, if you say correct, we're okay there, right? Now, that's due to, the present ordinance. The present ordinance, the ordinance that exists today, it's eighty times one forty, which is eleven hundred two, eleven thousand two hundred, correct?
Yes, it leaves, it leaves you with a footprint of nineteen hundred and sixty square feet. But that's a different footprint. That, that is the floor area.
No, wait.
We're, we're talking about measuring a, a plan view, which includes overhangs and things like that. So, there was a bit of an adjustment to make sure that you were able to achieve the, the floor area. So, the nineteen sixty that would be permitted under that calculation that you're, you're talking about, versus the twenty-two hundred that it would be with the building coverage, is the difference between overhangs and things like that, and the flexibility in terms of, uh...
All right. Here's my point. One of the chief complaints, I think you will agree with this, from the public, from the people that live in these areas where there's been a so-called McMansion built, which is an oversized home, one of the chief complaints is that they don't want that. They don't want it, okay? And we, as a community, have to respect that. So, what I'm saying, I'm trying to compare the present ordinance with your suggested ordinance. Which one turns out to be a larger home?
It, it's hard to say, because, because if we're talking about larger in terms of volume...
In terms of volume, yes.
In terms of volume, your current ordinance produces a bigger volume home.
All right, well, I'll explain this to you then. The current ordinance provides to calculate the floor area is width times one forty feet of the property, correct? That comes out to eleven thousand two hundred. Then you multiply that by thirty-five percent. Then you scale it down a little bit, if you want what it turns out to be in the end, that you're actually multiplying by thirty-three percent.
Correct.
Okay, I know that. But thirty-three percent of eleven thousand two hundred is three thousand six hundred and eighty-two. But 33% of 11,200 is 3,682. That's a lot less than yours, which is 4,400.
Which is a footprint of...
You're creating...you're creating more McMansions.
Which is a footprint of 1,960 under the current code versus a building coverage of 2,200 feet. In other words, this is the floor area within the walls of 1,960. The code, if adopted with our revision, would allow that footprint to be 2,200 square feet, but that's including roof overhangs and things like that. So, we wanted to be sure we were not actually arbitrarily limiting the floor area. If you think this as a group, if the community thinks that this is still too high, the answer is very simple, just reduce the number a percent or two. This is, again, the first time we're going through this. But the intent, at least my intent for the first round, was not to necessarily limit the square footage yield, but try to limit the volume of the home.
The volume of the home, that's what we're talking about. This...they're both...I'm comparing both volumes, and yours is 800 square feet more. It would turn out to be 800 square feet more.
Actually, no. In the A2 zone now, the...with a building coverage of 25% and a height of 32 feet, I can do a 76,000 cubic foot home. Under this scenario, if we reduce the coverage...
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Could you say that again? The present ordinance?
The present ordinance in terms of mass of the home allows the principal building to cover 25% of the lot. It allows that lot to be...that building to be 32-foot tall.
The present ordinance doesn't go by the building...the building. It goes by the lot size. We determine the volume of the home by calculating the lot volume, the lot size. We multiply the lot size, 80 by 140, and then take 33%, 35 or 33% of that.
That's not volume, that's floor area. And there's a difference. Floor area is the amount of usable space you have in the building. Volume is the size of the envelope from the outside. If you take...if you take the A2 zone, you have a 25% building coverage, a 32-foot height, a 5-on-12 roof pitch, when you take the area of the rectangle and the area of the triangle, you wind up with 76,000 cubic feet of building. If you reduce the building coverage to 20%, you've reduced it to 62,000 square foot. It's a 19% reduction in permissible building volume. You're right about the square footage. The square footage, but they don't necessarily translate. If you think the square footage should be smaller, if you think we haven't gone far enough, you can knock it back another percent or two.
Let me ask a question. Presently, if you were a builder, if somebody was a builder, presents plans to the building department, prepared probably by an architect, in those plans, the architect takes out present ordinance, calculates it, and submits plans saying that "I am permitted to build 3,500 square feet under this ordinance." The plans are submitted to the building department, correct? The building department reviews them, and the building department can either grant or deny a permit, correct?
We're within the scope of the rules, yeah.
Okay. So, assuming that the builder is honorable, he's honest, and the architect is also doing his job, and these numbers that they present are accurate, the building department reviews it and gives them a permit to build this house. He builds a house with 3,500 square feet internal. Is that what you call a living area?
Floor.
Floor area? I don't see a floor area, because you've got two floors. Oh, both floors, okay.
That's what you're regulating in your FAR.
Then, there are pure periodic inspections done by the building department as the building is being constructed. At the end, at the end, when he's finished, the builder says to the building department, "Please review my construction, my building, and give me a CO, because I have a buyer. I have somebody who wants to buy it." What I described, is that the normal process? Is that the way it should be done? The way, in a perfect world, it would happen?
Sure.
Okay.
And that's where I was getting at, the problem with using FAR. If I'm a builder and I come in and I'm entitled to a 4,400-square-foot, two-story home, you take the ordinance that we are recommending here, you put down a 2,200-square-foot footprint, you do a 2,200-square-foot second floor, and you have an unfinished attic. Now, you're at 4,400 square feet, and you have the volume. If you are regulating FAR, someone gets that plan approved for a 4,400-square-foot, two-story building with an attic access through a closet in the bedroom, and then there is a full stair and a finished room upstairs. That's the kind of problem we've seen in terms of administering. People do this later, and then the second or third owner gets trapped in it when they do a revale or something like that. So, again, we're trying to control the scale of the building from the outside. What happens on the inside is up to the homeowner.
Yeah, there's no perfect system, obviously. Because when you're dealing with people and you're dealing with math, anybody wants to cheat or figure out a way, correct?
Architects are very creative people in terms of...because...
I agree. They are, I agree.
Tracy, maybe you can clarify this point.
Can I finish, please?
Yeah, I'm just...I have a question about the math that you're using.
Yeah, but can I finish my questions?
I just want a point of clarification.
Sorry?
I just want a point of clarification about what we're discussing. If the...if the maximum principal building coverage...
Thank you.
If the maximum principal building coverage is 25% right now, that is taken into account before the floor area ratio, correct?
Maximum building coverage and floor area ratio are two completely different things.
Right, so what I'm saying is that you're doing this math based on the floor area coverage. You first have to do the math based on the maximum building coverage. So, you're doing 11,200, 25% of 11,200 first, right?
Correct.
So...
No.
That's the coverage you're...
No.
That's the...
That's to figure out your building coverage.
I've gotten this information from the three cases that were presented to the zoning board, because the builder was in violation, and he exceeded the amount of space by between 500 and 800 square feet. First of all, I'd like to know how that happens.
I'm just looking at your sheet here and asking...
We're not talking about past cases. We're talking about the recommendations to go forward.
Yeah, and so, the current...currently, if we have an 11,200-square-foot lot, the maximum principal building coverage is 25%, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, that's where the math is incorrect here, Gabe.
What do you get as 25%? What do you get as 25%?
25% is the maximum principal building coverage. That's where you...that's the starting point, right?
Tell me what you get. Tell me what you get.
It's in the ordinance.
It's 2,800 square feet.
How much?
2,800. 11,200.
You're saying 2,800 is the maximum that individual, what an 80 by 140 lot can get from a coverage?
That is 25% of an 11,200-square-foot lot is 2,800. Am I wrong?
That's not correct.
I'm not wrong.
It's not that you're not correct. 25% of 800 is 2,800. I agree with that. That is the number, but that is not our ordinance. Our ordinance provides exactly what I told you.
That's our ordinance, Gabe.
Sorry?
That's exactly the ordinance. Yeah, that's yours.
That's your footprint.
That's your footprint.
The plans that I reviewed, the plans that I reviewed, which were the cases in the zoning depart...zoning board department that were heard, you know, pretty much all the time, they submitted plans with the square footage of the house, the volume, living space of this number, 3,600, 3,800, and if it was over that, they would need to get a variance, which they never got. They just submitted the plans allowing them to build this amount, but they overbuilt it. I don't know how they overbuilt it.
Excuse me?
That's my understanding.
Can you explain the interior difference with all the catheters right now with the building coverage versus having two full floors there?
Yeah, actually, if you take your example where you're at 25...what was it, 25 or 28?
28.
2,800 square foot footprint in the A2 zone. I can do...I can do that home as a footprint of 2,800 square feet and 32 feet tall. And I can probably do a little bit more as a partial mezzanine store, but that thing will look like a 5,000, 4,000-square-foot building because of the volume.
Or which some...I mean, sometimes you have the footprint is wide, but then, on the second floor, they'll just have some, like, open space, which doesn't count towards the floor area.
Open to below and...
Right, and the back, they'll ultimately fill that in later on. So, I think that's the disconnect. You're talking about floor area ratio, which is a defined term to encompass living space and exclude certain things. The planner's talking about if somebody builds to their setbacks, they can build a much bigger structure than what his proposal is.
And what we're suggesting, too, is that if someone wants to finish their attic, and they're in compliance with the construction code, which has a lot of limitations for habitable addicts, who cares, at least from a mass perspective? The fact that someone is able to get more usable space in their home is not necessarily a liability to the town if the ma...if the volume of the building is kept small. Some towns, they did the basement thing, too, where basement counted in FAR if it was finished and didn't if it didn't. Your ordinance counts...doesn't count anything that's partially below grade, and that could be a problem, too, because if you push the basement up four feet out of the ground, you've now got more volume just with that as well.
So, am I wrong, Mr. Hyer, in saying that our ordinance, the math formula, is not what we stated? It's not the length of the lot times the 140?
No, no, you're absolutely correct. That's the way the floor area ratio is calculated, and you are correct. With...when you do that machination, you wind up with a .33 FAR...
Yes.
For that lot. You're absolutely correct.
Okay.
That's floor.
That's the ordinance that we have now. And you think that that ordinance is more complicated than we just discussed for a half-hour? Your proposal?
No one talked about complications. We're talking about what's going to be the best control on the size of the structures on the building, and that's what multiple people now are trying to answer for you. I think you just don't like the answer.
I'm not happy with the answer, no, unless I'm convinced of it, because I'm the one that has to make recommendations to the body.
I guess I'm trying to get better clarification. I'm just trying to get better clarification about maximum principal building coverage and how that is changed when you're talking about floor area ratio.
Actually, they're both standards, and if you look at how big the building can be from the outside, it's 32 feet tall and whatever that building coverage allows. That's how big the building can come. How I...how I elect to divide up the living space, whether it's two stories, one and a half stories, partial stories, three-story volumes inside the house, that's floor area ratio.
Right.
Yes.
So, you're taking...but he's taking lot size and comparing it to floor area ratio when the maximum building coverage is still 25% of the lot.
Correct.
The floor area coverage changes within that 25%.
Correct.
Dramatically sometimes.
In the example that you provided, which floor area is higher? Your proposal or the existing one that we have, the existing zoning that we have, the existing code that we have?
We're not regulating floor area in the new scenario. We're regulating just the volume of the home. If someone can actually achieve a greater living space within a smaller volume, more power to them. I mean, I think that...and this way, there's no incentive to cheat, because you can get what you can get inside the house, and you don't wind up with that problem where someone goes in and does an inspection or is issuing an electrical permit, and how did this room get up here? You avoid those problems.
But in your example of the new proposal, if you have a small lot, you have a small lot, wouldn't you have more floor area?
You would have smaller building volume. And if you finish the basement and finish the attic, and you wind up with more floor area, I...my recommendation is that shouldn't make much of a difference, because the public interest is to regulate the scale of the building from the outside. If someone has a volume in their home that they can use, and I'm talking in full compliance with all codes, because the building codes cover a lot of that nonsense, I think that's the way to go. Could you get a greater floor area in a smaller volume under this scenario? Probably, probably.
But when you're dealing with a zone, A2, where you have the majority of the homeowners in Glen Rock, and some of those lots are diverse, one will be bigger, one will be smaller, if you don't have controls like the one we have in our zoning presently, you will have a big difference in character, a big change between one home and another one in visual effect. That's what I...
The zoning for the building coverage will be proportionate to the lot size with the same cap that you have right now. In other words, regardless of how big the lot is in the A2, you're capped at a 2,200 square-foot footprint. So, that is the upper limit, and if the lot is smaller than 11,200, the building footprint gets smaller. It's the same safeguard, and again, where Glen Rock is unique and most towns don't do this, is you have that ultimate cap regardless of lot size, and that's a really good tool that a lot of other towns should probably use.
I think in your proposal of changing it to the building footprint concept will exasperate more the appearance of McMansions.
It's building volume.
Yeah, in volume. And that's what people are complaining about.
Is there a way for...to, you know, to...maybe some illustrations that you could provide to show that the volume will actually be smaller in the proposed...I mean, maybe you already have it here.
Actually, if you look at the bottom of the very last sheet in the A2 zone, if you look at your 25% building coverage and assume an 80-foot lot width and a 32-foot height, you produce a building that's 60 feet wide, 47 feet deep, 32 feet tall, and about 76,000 cubic feet. And if you reduce the building coverage to 20%, that lot, that home probably will stay at 60 feet wide, 37 feet deep, 32 feet tall. That is 62,000 square foot. It's a reduction in volume by 19%.
And that's taking the current ordinance and comparing it to the proposed changes?
Correct.
Gets the smaller house.
Correct.
Smaller volume house.
Any other questions, Gabe?
I think that's it for now, unless something else comes up.
Any other questions by board members?
I just have one question, and I wish I asked it before I realized I needed to go back to adult school for a math refresher. The existing EGFR ordinance, the 23054, there was...as Gabe said, it was effective 2008, I believe, there was an amendment in 2014 with ordinance 1695. Do we know what was amended?
Originally, I think it was 25%, and they increased it to 30% and 30...I'm sorry, 30% to the A1 and 35% to the A2. That's what I think.
Gee, if I don't know the answer to that question, as I'm obviously just filling in tonight, I'm sure we can pull those resolutions for you.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know...
It was amended in 214.
It's all public record, no secrets here.
Okay, no, and I was just wondering if, when the committee looked at it, if we just...yeah.
I don't know the answer.
Okay.
But...
That would explain why things kind of got out of hand.
I think that is kind of what I was getting at. That's actually what I was asking.
What was it? What was that?
That's how things got out of hand with that amendment.
Usually, towns make things stricter over time, not looser.
Yeah, so, that was...and, you know, I wasn't involved in this back then, so that was really just what I was, you know, what just came to mind. That's it.
So, Mr. Hyer, did you get a chance, I don't know, I forgot to ask you this question, but in your looking into investigating the problem and the possible solutions, you didn't go to these sites where there's complaints with these McMansions and talk to residents or anything like that about what their feedback would be?
No, I didn't interview anyone.
Okay, all right, thank you. There probably is someone here.
Any other questions by board members? If not, we'll open it up to public questions. Come forward and...is that mic on?
Not to his brother's first.
If you could, please state your name and your address.
Rich Peterson, 16 Franklin Place, Glen Rock, New Jersey, resident since 1973. I got to tell you that I was a CPA, a vice president of finance, a controller, and I dealt with a lot of numbers, but I got to tell you that this is...we're bordering on the frontiers of managed complexity here. So, I'm not going to even approach that. My concern is that I've published policies, they're documented by procedures and ordinances in case of a town. There've always been internal controls I've been worried about, and checks and balances, and I'm sure most people understand the terms, even though they might not have been accountants. Policies are guidelines that have been generated into ordinance to maintain certain home sizes in various areas, depending on lot size, et cetera. Those ordinance have been adopted into law. It's likely presumed that the town citizens want that practice in place. Exceptions of policy may be considered, I guess, in case of force majeure or something like, you know, acts of God that might cause something, but they should be really minimized. Policies are...but yet, policies are not what's written down in procedures and policy manuals to what actually happens in a town. And this is my concern. It's been in private business practice... And this is my concern. It's been in, in, in private business practice and everything else. Okay, so I want to go back, and I'm sorry, I might be going against what you said, but I want to understand a number of things about how the past houses, which were oversized, got processed and approved. I think I've got a little understanding of what the specific guidelines are now, although I'm not quite sure.
We don't have any experience with those, with the past projects. We don't have any experience with the past projects. The planning board wasn't involved in that.
I'm, I'm, I'm going to go forward, trust me. I just have to go back slightly before, one step back and two steps forward. Okay, thank you. Okay, so I don't know what the issues with, with those homes were, but they were out of compliance. So how are the pre-construction plans officially approved on behalf of the town? Who specifically is responsible for approving these plans? And what checks and balances are there over the approval of these plans? Because if these plans were approved and they were out of spec, then we have a real problem with whoever approves them. And I don't know who approves them. What do citizens of Glen Rock absolutely want? If they want the existing guidelines to be followed, how do we make sure that they are followed? What internal controls exist? What controls, controls are not in place that should exist? If this, if the citizens of Glen Rock want to expand sizes, square footage of new construction or renovation instruction, construction, et cetera, then that should be put to the board and to the town. And we should vote on it and say, yeah, we want larger items. We don't want to be consistent with the other houses on each block. Okay? And then we come to vested interests. And I'm concerned about this. Wealthy new residents may want to have the largest houses on the block. Builders and contractors are going to want to make the largest houses possible so they can increase, increase their profits. I can't blame them. Okay? As soon as I have a vested interest in not having out of spec buildings on their streets. And that's what I think a lot of people are here discussing tonight. They may, the town government may have a vested interest in raising the values of properties with larger houses so they can collect more taxes. And that's obviously something they might want. But the building department should have absolutely no vested interest other than following existing ordinances. No vested interest. Before any new ordinances are proposed, we may want to consider balancing all of the vested interests that I've mentioned here, and there may be more. Okay? So I, I want to thank you for your consideration and listening to me, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
First of all, sir, thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
Just, I'm going to reiterate that we're not.
What's that?
Do you have to swear to them? No? No, I'm just going to answer his question. We're not going to talk, again, we're not going to talk about passed up. Frankly, I don't know what happened on these past, these past permitting issues that people are speaking about. That's not what we're here to discuss at this work session tonight. The planner gave testimony relating to changes that we're looking to make going forward prospectively. So we'll take questions and we'll do our best to answer questions on those. I do want to just point out one thing, though. When people submit plans to the, you know, to the construction official in this town, the construction official is governed by the state of New Jersey. Actually, it's the Department of Community Affairs. No one in the borough of Glen Rock has any ability, even if they wanted to, to discipline a construction code official for his interpretation of the Uniform Construction Code or any of his duties. That, that jurisdiction lies solely with the Department of Community Affairs in the state of New Jersey. So I just want to be clear on that front as well as to what the people in this room and the people who sit, you know, on this day as that the mayor and council meetings have control of and what they don't have control of.
In, in response to that, I can only say that there is a mathematical formula that is going to be in place adjusted or is it currently in place? And when I worked, incompetence was not an excuse. If someone calculates wrongly and issues a permit that provides for an oversized house, then that, that's not right. And it's against what the town people want. And that's where I'm coming from.
And listen, I'm not going to get into specifics. I don't know what happened. I don't even know what sites or what block and lot you're talking about. And I'm certainly not going to talk about personnel that have not been given rice notices under law. What I, what we do want to let you know, though, is if, let's say in a hypothetical world, some, a construction code official did make an error in interpreting, interpreting the UCC, right? We don't have the ability, we being the borough of Glen Rock, do not have the ability to discipline him for that. We'd have to refer to the Department of Community Affairs down in Trenton, and only they can discipline him for carrying out those duties. There's very limited, there's very limited scope of things that the construction code official can do that we can discipline for. Interpretation of the UCC is not one of them.
So, so what I'm terming there is, is no recourse for graft, fraud, or incompetence. That's, that's in fact what you're saying to me.
No, that's, sir, that's respectfully, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying there might be recourse, but it doesn't come from this, it doesn't come from the borough.
I think the expertise to discipline would come from the Department of Community Affairs where, where they have more expertise in the subject than.
Well, if we're, if we're, if we're subjecting or sending that up to other people in, in the state who have no vested interest in our town, where I think we're doing the wrong thing.
Sir, that's the law. I mean, we, we couldn't discipline them if we wanted to. That's what I'm trying to confer to you. Only the state, the state has control over that.
I'm not talking about discipline necessarily. That would be something I would really like to see. I'm talking about the cure. If a house is built that's 800 feet too big, are we authorized to say, take that 100 feet away?
Let's, let's, let's talk off.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm William Husking. I've lived in this town for three decades. I have an observation and a, and two points of clarification. I expanded my house twice and the architect was a fine architect who lived in Glen, lives in Glen, lived in Glen Rock. They came out and expect, inspected everything. I had to, for a six-tenth of an acre property, I, I had to have two of those tanks on this, you know, those tanks, which I thought was ridiculous at that time. But here is my, and my house is in compliance, just in case anybody's worried. But here's my points of clarification. You mentioned that some of the towns that used this floor ratio in the 80s and 90s, after they found out how things were going, they're backing out and deleting it. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. And two, your proposal is deleting that now.
Correct.
Thank you.
I just can't, sorry, your address.
Oh, I'm sorry, 65 Andover Church.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jim Garofola. I live at 140 Midwood Road in Glen Rock. I've been here for over 50 years. This is the first time I've come to a board meeting here to address you people. Bear with me as I get this off my chest. The reason I've come, I've come here is to listen and to ask the questions, what is happening to our once beautiful city? I have heard claims of poor management, poor understanding of the rules and regulations, and of one person doing too many jobs, and of people not following up on COs that have been issued to homeowners. I've also heard that much of the problem seems to be involving a few builders and maybe one in particular. Maybe something can be done to have this builder follow the rules and regulations of our town. Many years ago, when Frank and Jay were the building inspectors, the cry of the people was, they are being too strict. And now I hear that the building department is not up to par. Is this true? And if so, why? There is need for some type of adjustment to the present building laws in this town. For example, I live in an area, Zone 2. Many houses are considered to be one and a half story capes. The new building, I won't even call it a house, the new building across the street is approximately 30 feet tall. Need I say, it dwarfs the houses in the area around it, which makes it, and which these houses are one and a half story capes. Yet this 30-foot monster is legal both inside and outside, sitting on a property approximately 60 feet by 125 feet. It is a three-story building with a full basement and six bedrooms. To say that it stands out is an understatement. And I won't even go into the exterior design. I suggest that the planning board limit the height of new homes in an area with, um, limit the height of new homes in an area with homes that are small, like one and a half stories. To limit the height to 25 feet or lower so that the new home will at least look and blend in a little better in our zone. I suggest you make another zone, A3, for areas that have smaller homes like mine. We have some reconstructed homes on our, in our neighborhood, and they seem to fit in very well and are very nice and have improved the neighborhood. So it is possible to improve a home and make it correspond or fit in with the neighborhood. My final statement is a recommendation that is the, that planning board, get out and check the buildings that you have approved. Take a look and see what they look like on the property and how they're being built. Okay? Finally, I am also concerned about knowing the size of homes. This home across from me has four, has six bedrooms. I would like to see the town limit homes to no more than four bedrooms. I also call to your attention, planning board, the school. The schools in town are bulging. If you have a four and six-bedroom house, how many kids do you think they might have? They aren't going to be all-in-laws, I'll tell you that. Think about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I could just indulge you, if we could take a brief break? 10 minutes. Thank you.
Members, please turn off your mics.
And we are back on.
Hello, Mr. Vela. Please state your full name and your address.
Yes, Scott Vela, sixty-five Glen Avenue, Glen Rock, New Jersey. I'm a long-term resident of Glen Rock, love the town. Also an architect, been practicing here for about thirty years. And I run these numbers in my head all day long, every day. Tracy sees me once a month here, she's sick of me, I'm sure. But I wanted to hopefully clarify what I now, tonight, understand a lot better. I have a vested interest in understanding the changes. And before I got here this evening, I was under the impression that, you know how rumors fly, that there was going to be a calculation based on setbacks relative to the depth of the house, and then allowing it to go up with two stories. And it wasn't tied to any percentage as far as coverages. Now I understand that there is a coverage piece to it, which basically now regulates the size of the house relative to the size of the property. So property gets smaller, house gets smaller. Property gets bigger, house gets a little bigger. So there is that element. And, and Mr. Valero, I understand your questions about the numbers, but again, it, your, the numbers that we're looking at, as they stand today under FAR, it's relative to floor area only. Today, with these new calculations, which I've just done, basically, it's a different way of calculating it, but it basically doesn't change the volume of what is allowed today. So tomorrow, you're going to be able to do the same volume as you were today. And I'll explain why, because I have a project going on right now, and it happens to be about eleven, eleven thousand two hundred square feet. The first floor is twenty-one hundred square feet. The second floor has to be fifteen hundred in order to get under the thirty-six eighty. And that's what it is. However, what I think is being missed by a lot of people, because they don't do this all day long, is that this twenty-one hundred square foot home only has thirteen, fifteen hundred square feet of usable space on the second floor, but the twenty-one hundred square foot print came straight up, and now they deducted out two-story spaces and unfinished space. So essentially, the volume of what is being presented this evening will not change within fifty square feet, or so I don't, you know, it's not exact, but it never is. So I think that, I think it's important that the board understands that what is being proposed is, is an easier way of calculating it. I think that the, the FAR, which I've struggled with, because there's a lot of gray areas of, you know, how you can take out space or not use space or this kind of space, but the, but it never really came to reducing the bulk of buildings, because you always had the ability to finesse it, change it. This is a more concrete way of regulation, in my opinion. And again, I've been doing this for thirty years. When, I think it was fourteen or fifteen, sixteen years ago, I was on the, the committee when they started to talk about FAR. And I was against it at the time, because I understood that it doesn't necessarily reduce, I'll call them McMansions, because that's what they were using at the time. I think that what, what is considered a McMansion, and under these new regulations, under the current regulations, you can still put up what I believe is a McMansion, and that is a big ugly box. So if you have a designer who is understanding of aesthetics and can put a building together, architecturally pleasing, has curb appeal, has ins and outs and different roof lines and everything, that building could be a lot bigger than the neighbor who looks like a McMansion, but this building complies and it looks like a smaller home. So I think a lot of it has to do with aesthetics. But my point here this evening is really, there's, there's not going, there's not going to be any change to the volume of what is current today. So I want everyone to understand that, based on the new regulations. I do have, I guess, just one or two questions. Has it been, it's more for the planner, as far as the calculations based on a rectangular lot, we understand the side yards and all of that, what do we do in terms of a pie-shaped lot? Because if you have a pie-shaped lot, and now you have twenty-five percent of the, like, where is that calculated? Where is that twenty-five percent calculated?
It would be in the A1 zone, the first hundred and seventy-five feet of lot depth.
Yep.
The area within that, and it depends on which end of the pie you're on.
So essentially, the, the, the side yard setbacks are not changing. It's really just, you're taking down, the building coverage is coming down from twenty-five to twenty.
Correct.
And then from, and then from twenty-five to sixteen in A1.
Correct.
And then you're allowing four percent for, you're allowing four percent for accessories. That, that I think is, is a step in the right direction, because what I have found is, whatever the maximum is, people were putting it into the house. And then there was no shed allowed after that, and the people coming in for variances, there was shed. Someone puts up a pergola, not knowing that they're going to go over, and, and it kicks in right away. So I like that. So I, I don't want to take up anyone's more time, but I just wanted to make it very clear that I was concerned coming in, now I feel better, and I understand, and, you know, based on my thirty years of experience, I just want everyone to know that there's not going to be much change from what is current today. I think one of the things that people are angry at is somebody cheated, somebody lied, bigger house than normal, shouldn't have happened, it happened, but that is basically an anomaly. So that's all I have for this evening.
Scott, may I ask you a question?
Yeah, yeah.
So the volume, Scott's not, he's not writing testimonies. You can come to the microphone, you can ask our planner a question, hopefully he can answer it. Sorry, Scott.
Lee Amram, Lee Or Amram, I'm a thirty-year resident in Glen Rock. I live at ten Yardly Court. The question that I have is really around volume and mass. The current structure today or the ordinances, as I understand it, and I'm a supporter, I mean, new houses come in all the time, I also build houses, I'm a private equity, full-time job, but I also build houses. So try and understand the bulk, and Scott is my architect, so we abide by all EGFR and everything else. But the reason I support all the new families coming in, you're competing with other towns, some that don't have the EGFR, the effective gross area, they just have FAR, and you're allowed to finish inside the house, whatever you'd like to finish, as the planner mentioned. So in terms of volume, we're not asking for bigger houses. I think what you've proposed is actually an excellent compromise, because what it does is it reduces the FAR, if I understand it correct, because I want you to correct me if I misunderstand what's being proposed. EGFR goes down, but square footage-wise, we're able to build the same-sized house interior that conforms where if you want to finish a closet, or you want to finish a space, you now no longer have to guess what the homeowner desires to do. So you've taken down the effective area by a percentage, right? So you've reduced the, the total number of square footage you're allowed to build is the same. So today, as I understand it, I've been to a number of board meetings, the setbacks, the front and back, the height, are all conforming. So nothing was violated from an optics volume from the street. Really what we're talking about are closets, our attics, our spaces within the house that the homeowner would like to use for their benefit, which has been deemed illegal, so we're not going to talk about what people have done. Going forward, right, what we're proposing, or what I'm hearing is being proposed, which I'm a big supporter of, is eliminating, right, the challenge of trying to guess what someone can finish or not finish, once you set that first-floor dynamic. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Well, thank you for doing all the hard work and effort, because I think it simplifies everybody's life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Senji Fory, one thirty-one Fairmount Avenue, of course Glen Rock. So I'm on this page with the current and proposed zoning.
Correct.
So currently, the coverage is twenty-five percent, and you're proposing to twenty percent, which is a reduction of nineteen, like, close to twenty percent reduction, right? So my concern here is our failure to, you know, work with the current ordinance by one or two people. I think the A2 zone, people who cannot afford A1 bigger lot, I'd love to, I can't, so you are just, I think this is going to hurt average Joe, people like me. It's a very heavy-handed reduction on this one, I think it should be looked at it. That's my, I think it's, twenty percent reduction is just huge, it's just unnecessary. And that is the problem with this town most of the time. One guy who sends the, throw the pizza box with the pizza, okay, you can knock, you can throw the pizza box, one guy comes in the grass, throw the rock, or you can throw the grass bag like that. I think we need to move on with that and look at it. Heavy-handed ordinance are not good. We need to find somewhere in a common space, okay, fine, we know this is what is happening, we're going to come up with some solution. And I'm okay with the rest of the things that you guys are proposing, this is just very heavy-handed on A2 zone. Ninety-three percent of the town, as Gabe said, that is A2. We are not, like, I think it's going to hurt, so if you guys can look into this to come with some middle ground, I think that will be beneficial. And my, another concern that I faced with a lot of big houses that are coming, look, Toyota nineteen seventy-three used to be smaller, it's bigger. The only thing they did was they implemented more safety features there. I think that's what, where we are missing. We are going bigger, but implementation, watchdog, rules, we don't have those, as the gentleman mentioned, like, you know, the policy. I think maybe we can, council can work on that. The new houses that I've seen, they have huge buildings, right? And next-door neighbor has a split house. Their bedroom is now, there's no privacy there. I've seen older people living in this town for sixty-five, seventy. You know what they're doing? They're putting that, what do you call that, transparent thing, so you, the light can come in, but they can look out. What the heck is wrong? People are paying taxes, living in this town for thirty years, and someone comes in and the building department or whoever, you know, is, got to be sensitive about this. You have a huge now window looking into their bedroom. These are very small, small things that we need to look at it. We are, I'm here for twenty-three, twenty-four years, I'm not leaving this town, but if this has happened to me, I will be very pissed off, sorry. Then I have to spend more money on the, like, your big trees to, th- these are small, small things, planners or building department, they should look at, hey, you know, this is your house, next door is split level? Oh, where's the bedroom? Now I have to have the curtain on, why I'm paying twenty thousand dollar taxes in this town if I can look outside the window? Thank you for listening to me, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, John Sweeney, thirty-nine Birchwood Road. So just one quick question before I start. Is this the only opportunity to ask questions or comment? Is this the only work session that's going to be open to the public for this?
We're intending to have another, the regular meeting in October, there'll be another public session.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is because I just saw this, and I really only had a few minutes to digest it and kind of get the whole thing straight. So I have a few notes. I'm sorry?
This is like round one discussion.
Perfect. Okay, well then I'll only focus on a couple of issues.
And also, we're just making a recommendation to the council, and the council will then have to actually change the ordinance, we're not doing that.
Understood, understood. So I'd like to go back to Mr. Valero's earlier point. I think there was something that, that got lost in the discussion, so, and it was also refer, goes back to Mr. Hires' earlier point, when he started his, his, you know, explanation. He had mentioned long, narrow lots. And Glen Rock is characterized by a lot of long, narrow lots. And when Mr. Valero was speaking, what he was really referring to, in many ways, was the narrowness of the lots. So many of the lots, especially in my neighborhood, are sixty by one seventy-five. And while EGFR wasn't perfect, one of the things that it did was, it limited the building, or at least the coverage ratio, when you calculate it, to the first one hundred and forty feet of the property. All right? So what this had the effect of doing was taking into account the narrowness, because it, it standardized the depth, it made it a standard depth, and now we changed the narrowness of the lot. So what that does is effectively, maybe imperfectly, because it does it through a floor area ratio, which has its own set of problems, but what it does do is, it attempts to account for the narrowness of the lot. This proposed way of approach doesn't do that. In fact, what it does is, it takes a lot, that is, and I did the calculations quickly here, so, just to give you an example, it takes a lot, that is, fifty-seven by two sixty-five, all right, and treats it the same, and fifty-seven across in the front, by two sixty-five deep, treats it the same as a lot that is a hundred and forty feet across in the front and a hundred and eight feet deep. Now this is really critically important, because what happens is, what it, what it allows for is, when you do the calculation, both of those lots would exceed the, the cap that you have, have for the, the, the coverage ratio for the first floor, which would be twenty-two hundred. So it would bring it down to twenty-two hundred. Okay? But assuming that a person who's going to build on a fifty-seven by two sixty-five lot is going to build the maximum they can build, which is twenty-two hundred, you know, on the first floor, they're probably also going to build twenty-two hundred on the second floor, right? So that gets them to about forty-four hundred square feet. Well, I don't know if you've ever seen a house that is thirty feet wide, seventy feet long, thirty-two feet high, and forty-four hundred square feet above ground, not including the attic, on a sixty-foot wide lot. It's enormous. And I'd be happy to share pictures with you, because I happen to have one right in my backyard. So I guess what I'd like to point out here is, one of the things that's getting lost in this proposed ordinance, or approach to, to solving this problem, is that it doesn't take into account the width, which was really the primary reason for EGFR to begin with. If we go back and we look at the discussions that were had, one of the reasons why it's such a funky calculation is because what it's attempting to do is take into account the width of the lot, and there was a recognition that the side yard setbacks weren't sufficient to do this. Because I can tell you, a twenty-foot high, twenty-foot high, seventy-foot long, with plus a twelve-foot roof on top of that, okay, when you're standing seven feet from it, it feels like you're standing next to the Empire State Building. So EGFR was intended to, to address this particular issue. All right? So the other thing I would just, I would just recommend, that you take a look around at the various houses that are causing these issues. I'll give you an example. So some of the recent ones that went up, and to Mr. Vela's point, the volume may not change, okay, but people aren't happy with the volume that's being created. So it's not like they're saying, well, forty-four hundred square feet on the front of a lot, on a, on a relatively small lot, oh, that's a good thing. No, they're saying, that doesn't quite work, it's really too large. So I think the, the idea would be to go take another look at this and say, all right, how do we account for the narrowness of the lot? And, and, yes, and, and then address the EGFR issues, which would result in that larger volume. Because EGFR results in a larger volume, unfortunately, but that's not what we really want. They want to control the volume. I guess that's really all I have for the time being, but I'm sure I'll have more once I have a chance to take a look. So apologies for, for speaking a little long.
By, by the way, the coverage was intended to be within a hundred and forty depth, feet depth for the A2 and a hundred and seventy-five for the A1. But are you, I think what you're suggesting, though, that is, that twenty-two hundred square foot cap is not enough, it's too loose in some places.
Well, it may not be. So my apologies, but I thought what we were doing was, that the calculation was not in the first one hundred and forty feet, according to your calculation, that it would be twenty percent of the entirety of the lot.
If the lot were a hundred and forty feet deep, yeah. I didn't, the examples I used didn't take the larger lot, but the ordinance as written and as proposed deals with only measuring the first one forty in the A2 and one seventy-five in the A1.
Okay. So then, just to clarify then, so what will happen then is, if you, I'd have to do the numbers in my head, but if you had sixty feet across by, you know, one forty, I don't know what that would give you for a...
Roughly eighteen hundred instead of twenty-two hundred.
Eighteen hundred, okay, so it would be a thirty-six hundred square foot, you know, if you doubled it, for example, yeah.
Sounds like, sounds like the issue is probably more one of height than volume, because the, a thirty-two foot house on a sixty-foot lot, if that, that house is half the width of the lot, if it's on an eighty or a hundred, the height isn't as big a deal.
Okay, so you're, so then, we're looking at it only from a standard lot, so say for exa, well, standard by, by the definition of the ordinance, namely, what is it, across, I think it's one, I forget what it is, eighty by one forty, I think is the standard lot in Glen Rock, so, okay, or the A2 district anyway, or A2 zone. So, okay, all right, the A2 district anyway, or A2 zone. So then, we're looking at this with a 140-foot cap.
Yeah. And I think the perception of a home size changes when the lot starts to get that narrow or narrower, so.
Okay. So that makes a lot more sense to me. Thank you for clarifying that, then this may, may work just fine.
Come to the next meeting.
I'm sorry, yes, till the next meeting. Thank you.
Any other members of the public like to have questions?
Sure.
How you doing? Roy Clipper, 142 Winslow Terrace. Thanks all for allowing me to speak tonight. For context, I've been a Realtor in town since 2017, been the top agent the last four years. I spend a ton of time talking to builders, homeowners, et cetera. I apologize, are we allowed to ask questions of people? Specifically, Mr., I apologize, Gabe. You said in the earlier video that you spoke to residents that nobody wants this. How many people have you actually spoken to, if you don't mind me asking? Concerning the size of the houses being too big?
How many people have I spoken to personally?
Yeah, approximate.
Hundreds.
Hundreds, okay. Well, with all due respect, I speak to thousands. I know there's two sides or three sides to all of this. The alternative to not allowing people to build, not saying build 10,000 square feet house, build larger houses, we will effectively have residents stop coming into this town. We have builders stop building, and what's happened is everyone's taxes are going to go up. My taxes just went up $3,000 this past year. Do you know what's going to happen if we don't allow people to build what we consider a regular-sized house? Your taxes will jump up about $20,000 because the revenue to this town will continue to decrease. Next question for the board. Did you guys factor in any, or which town specifically nearing by did you guys look into, or the two gentlemen who are doing this? Can you give a couple of towns off the top of your head that were nearby?
No, not nearby.
Okay. So Paramus had a very similar issue 15 years ago. Same exact situation. You had homeowners, and by the way, you keep referencing a couple builders. I will tell you, there are many homeowners in town that convert garages to living space, that convert second-stories attic to living space. Is there anything in the ordinance right now that specifically denies you the opportunity, if you built a house and you have an unfinished second-story floor, to put a bed, to put a TV? Is there anything in the ordinance right now that does not allow you to do that?
If you exceed, if that...
No, no, if, sorry. If the building is permitted per the code, everything's up to par, you have unfinished attic space per EGFar, that can't be finished. Is there anything that denies you the right to finish that space?
If you're under, if you're under the floor area ratio, and I'm not sure your ordinance doesn't require a garage, right? So...
It does, it does.
Well, then you, then you'll have a problem in closing the garage.
No, I understand. So, sorry, let me, let me rephrase. You have a second-story, 400-square-foot space, like this gentleman referenced a couple of times, that was completed after the fact. Is there anything in the code today that stops you, while it's unfinished, which is legal per the code, to put a bed in there, to put a TV, to put anything? The answer's no.
That may be a construction code or a health code issue.
There is?
Each house...
I don't believe so.
Each house in the separate zone has a limit of livable square foot you could put there.
No, no, I...
If that extra room exceeds that limit, technically...
No, no, I'm not denying that. The question is, what defines a room being finished livable square footage? Is it sheet rock? Is it insulation?
He's asking if you have an unfinished basement or you have an unfinished attic and you throw a bed in there, can you do that legally? I'd have to look into, I think there might be regulations against what you need, yeah, what you need to use something as a bedroom. I don't know the answer.
Forget a bedroom. Let's say you put a couch in there. Or you put a pool table.
Listen, you could put, you could put anything in unfinished space as storage space, if you're actually using it as living quarters.
If I, if I put a pool table in that unfinished space, is there anything blocking me from finishing that space, using it as a pool table, room?
If it's conditioned and it has a full stair access, I don't know. You get into construction code and I'm not sure where that ends.
I looked into, the answer's no.
Theoretically, the answer is if it's a finished area, livable finished area, which I...
We're not talking about livable finished area. I'm talking about you have a second-story room, okay? I have a bedroom here, and the room adjoining this room is unfinished per the plans. Is there anything stopping me from putting a pool table or a ping-pong table in that space to play and hang out? The answer's no.
What stops you is the permitted amount of space you have.
I don't think you're understanding my question.
If you have 3,500, then you make it 4,500.
Yeah, I know you do. I don't think this show...
I understand your question.
Thank you.
I don't think we're going to get to a definitive answer for you, and I don't think we have to argue it.
No, I agree. I'm trying to make a point.
I understand the point you're trying to make.
The point is that there's a lot of open-endedness, so I appreciate the fact that you guys are coming to elected as a whole. But to have, you know, with all due respect, somebody coming onto this video, which I drove here specifically to say, I would think back to differ. There are many people that actually want growth in this town. I understand that there's always two sides to the table. But if you guys want this town to continue to thrive and grow, I think you should continue on this right path to allowing people to construct, again, not saying 10,000 square-foot house, but allow it to construct a livable house. Do you know that in Fairlon, and again, don't quote me, Mr. Bella could probably tell you, you can build a 3,300-square-foot house on a 75 by 120 lot?
That's fine, go live at Fairlon.
Okay, but again, Paramus on a 100 by 130 lot, which is where I live in, I just sold the house, you could sell a 7,000-square-foot house. So I think you guys are on the right path.
It's your choice.
I understand it's our choice, but it's also the choice of, if you guys continue down a path to restricting people from doing what they want to do, you're going to have, continue to have the same problems. And you're going to have people not coming to this town anymore.
I've seen thousands and thousands of families come and go from Glen Rock, right? Come and go, live here, never had a problem in their last 17 years. Why do we have problems now?
That you know of, sir. With all due respect, I think, I would love to take you, give you my card, come out with me, I'll take you to 100 homes, and every single person at home has something different to say. So again, I think categorizing the whole town and saying, "Well, the town wants this," I think is unfair, because with all due respect, you didn't speak to everybody in this town.
I hear complaints about these McMansions every day.
Again, your quote is McMansions. Do you know what your taxes would be if every house in this town was a Cape or what, was it, was a house built 20 years ago?
I've lived there 45 years.
And what were your taxes 45 years ago?
$3,000.
And what are they now?
$20,000.
You know what they would do if, the taxes would go to $40,000?
But you know what inflation is? I'm talking about 40 years ago.
Oh, okay. And I'm telling you...
40 years ago, I bought a car for $3,000.
The bottom line is, we are surrounded by towns that have smaller lot sizes that allow you to build a bigger house. No one is saying that we should abide by the same tea, but I think restricting is going to be detriment, tremendous detriment to this town.
That's your opinion.
No, that's actually not my opinion. That's the opinion of majority of the residents in this town.
It's the council that determines the zoning and the laws that we will abide by.
But you made a very aggressive statement saying that the majority of people in this town don't want that. You've spoken to hundreds of people that don't want it.
I have a basis for it, a factual basis for it. You?
I do, actually.
I have an interest...
Clipper, I think we all understand your point.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else?
No, I just want to thank you guys all for your time and your consideration. Really appreciate it.
Thanks very much. Thank you. Any other, please, please come forward, say your name and your address.
Maureen Coghlan, 54 Abington Terrace. I am fortunate because my street has the look and charm that I think a lot of the residents who live here would like to see continue. And I'm actually running for town council, and I've been out canvassing, and quite a few people have made comments about the black windows, the white houses. So is there anything in the ordinance that talks about the aesthetics of the homes?
Actually, in New Jersey, it's very difficult to control aesthetics of a single-family home. I mean, you can do it in a historic district, but under zoning, it's really more bulk. You really can't control materiality and design. So you've got to, you've got to draft your standards where the building can't get out of scale, but, for example, I worked in one town where the mayor wanted to make every house have to be colonial design. Well, you can't do that. I mean, in a historic district, maybe, but not, not elsewhere. So I think things like the minimum roof pitch, I think, is a good thing. You don't wind up with flat roof houses and things like that. But there, there isn't much else you can do.
I think that's part of the problem, though, with the residents. You know, I was on Delmar today, and there's another house, they all look the same. And there's a house on Glen Avenue that looks like a Starbucks. There's a house on Belmont. There's a house on Bedford. And they don't fit in with the town. And I'm not sure if people would even really mind the size of the home if they looked a little differently. They all look the same, and they don't fit in. So that's what I've observed.
Actually, there's a, there's a real danger to try to make the houses too small, because then they just become a very uninteresting box, because people are trying to salvage as much floor area as they can. If there's a little bit of wiggle room in the standards in terms of flexibility, where you can do a little volume without necessarily doing the square footage, then there may be an incentive. And other than that, it's, it's a difficult game to regulate, single-family home aesthetics.
Yeah, there's, there's design standards in like Santa Fe, New Mexico, Cape Cod, and places like that, but in Bergen County, I mean, I don't know of any town that has design standards.
Well, if there's a historic district, but Glen Rock does not have a historic district.
The general rule in Bergen County is that beauty is in the eyes of the beholder and his pocketbook.
In other words, you can't legislate taste.
So I guess if the ordinance gets passed, this new ordinance, then, there was a house back in April where they were granted a variance, a house on Chestnut, I believe. So now this new ordinance, I guess, will sort of relinquish the, you know, not obeying the EGFar ratio, right? Is that what we're trying to do here, all the houses that are going up now?
Well, the house you're talking...
We're trying to give them a pass.
Well, first of all, we're just making some recommendations to the council. We're not really working on an ordinance right now. So, but that will be up to the council as to what the final ordinance will be.
The house you're referring to, it was been resolved, it was presented before the zoning board, and they did grant the variance, so it's finished.
But then didn't some houses in the last month or so, were they not granted variances?
Each case stands on its own footing in front of the zoning board. Each case is determined by its own facts, its own situation.
And the application before the board will be governed by the laws in effect at the time of the application? I don't think anybody's looking to make any sort of retroactive application of an ordinance change. So if somebody has an application, and now that application is governed by the ordinance as it exists today.
Okay.
Not real, it's, we have that in our bylaws, we did change it. It's at the time of the certified completed application, not just at the application, when the application is completed, which could be six months later.
But that's what comes before the planning board, not what becomes before the zoning board.
Yeah, we discussed that.
Right, but it, that affects, that's the bylaws of the planning board.
The planning board, right.
Not the bylaws of the zoning board.
I don't know what the bylaws of the zoning board, I thought we talked about the planning board.
I'm sorry, we took over your time. Do you have anything else?
Thank you. Any other members of the public, like, questions or comments? Okay, if not, then we'll close the public session. I'd like to maybe go around the table and see what members think about the proposed changes and any other suggestions that you may have based on the comments from the public and our planner.
I could say something about, be happy to hear, listen to other people first, it's up to you.
Gabe, go ahead.
I've studied this, my position is quite clear. I'd be happy to change my position in anything, whether it be personal life, or business, or something as simple as being a member of a community. However, though, I have an obligation to myself and to the community and to the planning board to do, to what I think is right, if I'm convinced of it. I have to be convinced. I have to know the facts, I have to know the situation, I have to understand it. I can't present it to somebody else and say, "Yes, I do want to do this," unless I am convinced it's the right thing to do. I firmly believe at this stage, I know we're going to have other meetings next month, next week, whatever, but at this stage, I am not satisfied that your proposed change of ordinance will rectify the situations that our town is faced with now. I feel that we've had this more, this ordinance in effect for 17 years. We have not had a problem. I love it because it has some flexibility with the scaling down. If a house is deemed to be, to have too much volume, we have the ability, if it's over 9,500 square feet, to scale it down. And that's good, that helps all the neighbors, because we are tight-knit, tight-knit, we're 93% residential in a 2.7 mile square area. That's it, 12,000 square feet. We're living right next to each other. They look pretty from the outside, but we're very close. So if one neighbor is putting, if one builder is knocking down a house, it's going to impact five, six, eight, 10 other houses in the area in that it will be standing out, overcoming the other neighbors, and it will not look good, it will not feel good, it will not be the character that we experienced as Glen Rockers. So, yes, you have a new proposal, but everything is new. I don't know what this is going to look like two years from now. You know, it may sound great now, but it's math, and anybody could fool around with math. Something could happen with this math formula that we can't, we can't foresee as far as unintended consequence of what we're proposing, you know? Because it has to do with, you know, being honest about what you're presenting to a building department and what you're going to complete, and the building department has some obligations to review everything and make it right. So I am not convinced at this stage, I'll say it again, at this stage, that this proposed ordinance would be beneficial to our residents in our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Gabe.
Well, I'll just add in, having spent the last 40 years driving around town for hours on end, I'm probably well-familiar with the community, and I can say for certainty what may work in one neighborhood absolutely would not work in another neighborhood. We have very unique areas of this town. I found out early on as a police officer in town, we have some houses in town that actually, depending upon what room you're in, you might be in a different town, because the town borders go right through the house. So I think if we're looking for the perfect solution, we're never going to find it. This whole matter, looking at EGFar, was brought to the planning board, asking us to look at it, because what we have may not be working. So we're searching for a solution. I don't think we'll find the solution that will make everybody in town happy. But I think it's our obligation to do our due diligence and just explore it and try and determine what, in our opinion, we can recommend to the council that's in the best interest of the community at large, understanding that there will be people who will be opposed to it.
Thanks. Liz?
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I think that's true. The council referred this to the planning board because EGFar is not working, and it's created problems. And what the council has asked the planning board to do is, without personal bias, evaluate our current ordinance as it pertains to the master plan, and see whether or not there are recommendations that we can make that will improve the issue that we have with the mass and scale of building in Glen Rock. And that's all we are tasked to do.
Right, I agree completely with that statement, that we're, we're looking at this. This is the first that most of us, not on the subcommittee, have, have heard the presentation and heard what you've been studying. And the, the point is, what is in place now does not seem to be working the way we want it to, or the way the council originally intended it to. And I think this is a great first step to move forward, to correct some of the issues that are bothering people in town, with the understanding that you do have to be careful not to cut off people coming into town because they love it here, you know? And maybe not everybody wants to move into a house that has one bathroom, or, you know, that's, you know, houses that were built in the 1940s do not necessarily serve the purposes of families in the 2020s. So I think we have to keep that as an open mind as well.
Yeah, I agree with many things, and I appreciate for all the work you guys have done in this presentation tonight. I've been in town my whole life, went to school here, and seen my own house. I've seen siblings' house. I've seen neighbors' houses. I've seen friends' houses. And, you know, simplifying a plan, obviously, for anybody coming to town is always, you know, a plus. You know, there are many good things to this, you know, this can make it simple. I love the idea of the bulk variance. That gives, if you need it, that gives a flexibility for someone that may have a bigger lot. That's always a plus, making it simpler to go through the process. One important thing I think we can't overlook, we have to be sensitive to all parties. Okay, that doesn't just mean the people that say that it's not, that's not consistent with the neighborhood. You know, our neighborhoods change. You know, we want to grow. You know, so I think looking at this, digesting this further, finding further simplifications, but at the same time, keeping it where we can grow and we can allow people to do what they want with the least amount of restriction. I think that's an important thing to keep our eye on that ball.
Thanks, thanks. I'm in favor of simplifying the regulations, but I think we might want to recommend to the council that they consider even a lower percentage, a little bit, a little lower. And also, from what some people say about, you know, the shock of, you know, a three-story house right next door, maybe there's some kind of roof adjustment that could be made. Fred, can I ask you about that? I think initially you did talk about, in order to avoid like the sheer wall on a, you know...
Yeah, some towns have adopted a standard that requires the setback to vary with the height of the wall that's adjacent to it. For example, if I'm putting a 15-foot garage wall next to the neighbor, that can be closer to the side lot line than if I'm doing the full 32-foot building, eight or 10 feet off the property line. That's one thing, but that's another complication. I mean, that's something that could be looked at. Maybe, maybe you could look at height a little bit. Maybe, maybe height be based upon lot width. But, you know, that's getting a little tricky, too. People are going to build two-and-a-half stories. No one's building a ranch or a Cape anymore, so...
And you also mentioned the pre-construction grade.
Yes.
Controlling for that.
That's a big deal.
Yeah.
With height, all right. Okay, so...
Just one last thought, real, one sentence, two sentences. The question comes down to the core. Is the ordinance bad, or is the enforcement of the ordinance bad? That's what we got to discuss and figure out. That's my opinion.
Seems to me that, you know, evidently, the ordinance is allowing very large houses that are shocking neighbors. But I don't know if that's the, that's what happened.
But it's not, it's not this planning board's job to evaluate the building department, for example.
I'm not asking to evaluate. I'm just saying... We've changed, we want to change something that may not necessarily need to change. It needs to be properly enforced. These houses that are going up...
But I don't think anyone has shown that it's not been properly enforced. If builders are getting around because of loopholes in the current ordinance, well, then we fix the ordinance.
Even the current ordinance is allowing the, you know, the three-story walls. And I'm just thinking, because the master plan says essentially that we should protect and enhance the residential character of the town. So if there's things that we can do through fixing the zoning to avoid the wall shock for neighbors...
Right, I'm saying that's within the fix that we're looking at. You can't say we have to look and see why this is being allowed. It's being allowed because it's part of the ordinance that's in place right now.
Right, exactly, sure, sure.
I'm not sure about that.
Well, yeah, otherwise it wouldn't be happening.
For the council to consider remedies to these problems from the current ordinance, right?
The cases that I've heard from the zoning board, and I've seen that they're still on video. You can watch them yourself. The permitted amount is X, the builder built X plus 500.
Okay, and what does the zoning board tell them to do?
He was, he's in violation of the ordinance.
And what is the recourse for that, the zoning board tells them they have to take it down?
The recourse, in my opinion, is better enforcement. Watch the people at the gate. It's like, I'll give you an analogy. We all go to airports, right? We, you know, they tell us you can only take 40 pounds of luggage with you, right? And then there's that wise guy who brings 40 pounds in a suitcase, and then he brings, got a backpack with another 30 pounds. He's sneaking it in. He's violating. Somebody's got to stop him. You don't say airlines, you know what we do with the airlines, say, let's make it, everybody could bring 70 pounds to the airplane. What will that do to the airplane? What will that do to the comfort of the people that are traveling? It's the enforcement that's important, not the ordinance. The guy is violating. Thank you. I'm not going to talk anymore.
Okay. So where do we go from here? Do we develop the, our...
Yeah, ultimately, you'll...
Recommendations?
You'll have to formalize a report, which I'm assuming Dan Legano will prepare, perhaps working with the planner, and that report will go to the mayor and council. They'll ultimately adopt an ordinance, sorry, an ordinance, and then...
No, 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 we'll have the planning board. What are the basic steps for us?
Figure out what you want to recommend to the mayor and council, and we'll put that in a report.
Sounds like the public wants to have more opportunity for input.
Yeah.
Now that they've had...
I mean, there's going to be a lot of opportunity, because remember, you're going to forward recommendations to the mayor and council, right? So then there'll be an opportunity to speak at the mayor and council meeting about this. And then the way this is supposed to work is when the mayor and council is going to propose an ordinance amendment, that proposal's supposed to come to the planning board for a 35-day review then, and then you'll let them know whether you agree with the changes before it ultimately goes into effect. So I think there'll be plenty of opportunity for people to provide comments. Plus, I think you said you were working on a month-long timeline, so you'll have another meeting in between there if you want to.
Okay, if we could have another meeting of the subcommittee and draft a recommendation. We'll consider it again at the regular meeting in October. Is that good?
Sounds good.
Just out of curiosity, since a lot of this has been dealt with at the zoning board level, does the zoning board submit input to the governing body?
No, it goes to the planning board. The proposed changes to the zoning ordinance go to the planning board.
Yes, I...
The zoning board generally does an annual report, and that annual report can recommend certain changes, too. If they find that they're granting a lot of variances, maybe the ordinance needs to be revised. That's how the zoning board gets input into the process.
Yeah, and that's actually what I was referring to. Okay, that answers my question.
Does that report just go to the mayor and council, or would the planning board see that report?
I think the planning board should see that report, because it goes into the master plan and your ordinance recommendation.
And it's your recommendation, so you should see it and be okay with it.
And I would think if there was a recommendations made last year, maybe we can consider that as part of our process moving forward.
Well, I mean, I would think you're all going to have to approve the recommendations that go to the mayor and council by majority vote, right? There's not one person I hear that speaks unilaterally for the whole board. So you'll certainly have an opportunity to review anything that is going to go, review and approve anything that's going to go to the mayor and council.
If we can get a hold of anything that the zoning board might have put out last year...
I believe Tracy distributed that to us earlier this year.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, I was getting it.
Might have missed it, but thank you.
Okay, then, do we need a motion to adjourn, I guess?
I'll be happy to make that motion.
All in favor?